Missouri to be held on Monday, May 6, 2019 at 7:00 PM in the council chambers at 301 South Fifth Street. We will have invocation by Councilman Black.
Stand together, please. Our father, all of us here tonight are created in your image and we are your children. You have designed us to live together and we ask that deliberations and decisions that are made tonight would be within your goodwill and your pleasure for your children. Amen.
Please, the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilwoman Parson.
Here.
Councilwoman DeGarris.
Here.
Councilwoman Horton.
Here.
Councilwoman Cornman.
Here.
Councilman Black.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis.
Here.
And Mayor Smith.
Here.
We do have a form.
Thank you. Disclosure of interest. Any member of the city council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the presented agenda or with any matter discussed at a previous meeting. Hearing none, the citizens input, each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the city council on any matter which is not on the presented agenda. I think, let's see. I think we have Mr. Jones first.
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to congratulate all of you all for the recent election that you have here. That's wonderful. Last month at the council meeting, we made a proposal that we would like to hold each other accountable because we don't want to come here and expect something from you and we do nothing. Neither do we want to do everything and get no results from you. I want to give you a report on what we have done since we were here last. I made a trip to Springfield, Missouri. I visited three universities, Evangel, Drury, SMS regarding behavioral science department. I talked to several, Evangel and Drury didn't have an Afro-American that was graduating this year, next year. SMS did, but they said that you need to go on their website and post it on their website. I've also scheduled a meeting with two state representative in the Missouri House on Wednesday to talk about the Business 60, the King Street situation. So, on Wednesday, I have that. Also, on Saturday, I was riding Amtrak and I stopped in Joliet, Illinois, and there was an Afro-American that worked with Allied Security and I told him of the need, the interest of wanting to hire an Afro-American person. He said he would call, "Mr. Mark, I don't know whether he'd call you yet, but if he hadn't, he would definitely do it." He was supposed to do that today, Ardon, that kind of thing. So, we have been busy and I don't know what you guys have done, so I don't know, can we get some feedback on maybe some things that you guys have done since the last meeting?
Well, I know our police and fire went to the job fair that was hosted several weeks ago and the fire chief has gone and spoke to several classes at the high school about firefighting. As far as I know, that's what we've done the last few weeks.
Okay. Well, the only challenge that all of us want to take here is that to look at it as being urgent, all of us keep working and we'll be back here every month because we cannot rest until this matter is addressed, Ardon. So, that's where we are. If you have any questions you need to ask me, I'll, we'd be glad to try to answer those questions. Ardon, we want a good relationship with you and that's our goal, but at the same time, our goal is for both of us to work hard, be diligent in what we do, and stay true to the commitments that we make one another.
Thank you. Next, we will have Mr. Smith, Robert L. Smith.
Good evening. I'm Robert L. Smith, the other less famous Robert L. Smith. I want to congratulate you on your new position, Mayor.
Thank you.
And I appreciate the previous speaker's interest in diversity. I think that's something all we need to work towards, struggle for. It's not easy. And sort of, well, that's not what I'm here for tonight, it's just that I just wanted to come here and speak on my opinion about the sewage product, project, about the bids, I think, that are just on the agenda today.
Mr. Smith?
Yes?
It's on the agenda tonight, so when it comes up for discussion, you would be able to address it then.
Oh, you have to wait until then?
Instead of citizens input, yes.
Okay. I'll wait until then. Thank you very much.
Okay. Please state your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Matt Bain. I'm from Sykesville, Missouri. I am U.S. Senator Josh Hawley's Southeast District Office Director. Good evening, Mayor Smith and members of the council. As I said, I serve as Senator Hawley's Southeast District Office Director, which is based in Cape Girardeau. I'm here tonight simply to introduce myself to you all and to provide the members of the council, city staff, and any concerned citizens with our office's contact information. I cover 25 counties in southeast and south central Missouri on behalf of the senator, and that's a lot of ground and a lot of people to cover for one person. That's why, to cover those citizens' needs, issues, and concerns with the federal government. Senator Hawley and I believe that government closest to the people is the best, and that's why I will rely on local leaders like yourselves and county commissions to make sure our office is serving the needs of Missourians here in Poplar Bluff and around the state. I know you all have a full house and agenda tonight, so I am available to hear your concerns or issues tonight, or we can connect by phone, email, or meetings later so that I can visit with each of you to discern the issues that are important here regarding the federal government. Thank you all for your service to your community, and we look forward to working with you all on the issues important to the people of Poplar Bluff. So, thank you, and I will provide business cards for everyone, and there's no questions or anything. Thank you all and look forward to touching base after you all get done with this full agenda. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Workshop item?
Mayor Smith.
On the web?
Mayor Smith.
Yeah, sure.
I'm Travis Slaton, 2040, King Road. Mayor Smith, members of the council, I'm here on behalf of Robertson Contractors to provide some clarification as to the status of the Shelby Road project and its opening.
That'll be a discussion item later in the meeting, so you can come up and discuss then.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry. I'm going to discuss it at the end of the meeting, so when I bring it up, you can come
The city council will review an agreement between the City of Poplar Bluff and S.H. Smith &amp; Company for consulting services relative to updating the airport master plan and layout plan.
Yes, as it says, it's the update of the airport master plan, which hasn't been done in over 20 years. That's something that really should be done every 10 years. They compile a lot of different information concerning the airport, and we need that information to be able to apply for grants for the airport, which most of our expenditures out there are grant funds. And Smith &amp; Company's done a lot of work at the airport, and we're recommending that we do this contract with Smith &amp; Company for the airport master plan. It's a 90-10 project. We're responsible for 10% of the cost.
A motion is to be moved to the voting session, May 20.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to be moved to the May 20 voting session. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We'll move. The city council will review a request for qualifications for consulting firms to manage and coordinate all project matters for the city relative to the City Hall Police Department project.
Yes, as you recall, a couple of months ago, we had a presentation by Navigate Building Solutions out of St. Louis. They would be the owner representative for a new city hall and police station. They specialize in public projects, city halls, police stations, fire stations, and you should have received in your packet a brochure outlining what all they've done. Mr. Todd Sweeney is here, and I thought I would just have him kind of come up and let you all know what he'll be doing for us in this project.
Good evening. My name's Todd Sweeney of Navigate Building Solutions. Thanks for having me down again and welcome to the new mayor, obviously, and the new council member. When we came a few months back to talk to you, we did a presentation on the associated services and strategy of how we would embark on supporting the city in the journey of taking the concepts that currently exist as far as a potential new police station, potential new city hall, and taking those two ideas and looking at available sites, available opportunities to understand what would be the options that you could potentially undertake to implement those ideas. We had created a presentation that defined a role that we would play in determining the what. What is it that could potentially be built? Is it a police station? Is it a city hall? What departments? What size? Where? Analyzing some existing sites and others that might come up that are associated with the potential location of it. And then the how would be the cost, the schedule, the phasing, the constructibility, and just how you would go about actually executing the work. We had quantified that and defined that as a Phase 1 effort. In the recent proposal that we've submitted to the city after the qualifications we identified, and in the presentation, we identified a dollar value associated with those services in a duration of approximately three months. In Section 2 of your book, you will see a schedule that outlines starting in March and being done three months later. I've got an update to that today I can give you that would suggest that if you were to approve us tonight for that Phase 1, we would embark on that and be in front of you as early as the first meeting in August with the options, which would hopefully enable you to make very clean and concise decisions on the direction you'd like to set going forward. Again, with answers to the what, where, and how you might embark on a new city hall and/or police station at a given site in your community that best serves the needs of that community.
Something that we've been working at for quite some time, and I think there are some of us that feel like we do really need to move forward on this, and I believe that this is a service that will help guide us and help us, hold us accountable to some extent to move forward on that, and I'd like to see you do that. So, with that, we need a motion to the, tonight's?
The next voting session, next meeting.
Okay. Make a motion then that we move it to the next voting session, be May 20.
May 20.
Second.
We have a second?
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded that we move item B to the voting session to be held May 20, 2019. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Item C, the city council will discuss a proposed amendment to the Dangerous Building Ordinance and the Code of Ordinances by including a new section relative to trespassing upon the premises of buildings that have been posted as a dangerous building.
Thank you, Mayor. We've worked with the planning department and Justin Gregory, our city prosecutor, the police department, and code enforcement. You know, we have a lot of issues come up where the building inspector or code enforcement will post a building as a nuisance and dangerous and order it to be vacated. And then, of course, we find folks have gone back in there and are squatting or are not abiding by the order to vacate the building. And really, after looking at the ordinances, there wasn't a whole lot that the police could do about it. You know, we could tell them they weren't supposed to be there, but there was really no enforcement. So, what Mr. Gregory came up with is the ordinance that's proposed tonight that would clarify the fact that no one's supposed to be in those buildings, occupying them once they're deemed a nuisance, and also that if they are, they could face a $500 fine and up to 90 days imprisonment. He used some other ordinances from neighboring communities as an example, as a model for what he's put together and is presenting tonight.
Make a motion, move this to the voting session to be held May 20.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. The city council will discuss property tax liens.
Yes, you should have received in your packet some information. Back in 2011, City Manager Doug Bagby and myself approached the council about trying to do something about the vacant lots where there was liens on them, and at that time, the council chose not to do anything. When Matt Winters came on as city planner, he and I have been talking about it, and a couple of the council members, and City Attorney Mark Richardson. And, you know, one of the proposals we talked about back then was a lot of these lots where we went in and torn down houses and had to keep mowing the grass, the liens are up to anywhere from a few thousand dollars up to seven, eight, nine thousand dollars, and the property may only be worth a thousand or $2,000. What we had proposed back in 2011 was if somebody was interested in that lot, we would sign an, or they would sign an agreement with the city that they would agree to take that property and build a structure, a home, within 18 to 24 months. At that time, the lien would be forgiven. That gives the property an opportunity to be put back on the tax rolls, which helps all the taxing authorities, the school district, the county, the city. Also, there, of course, would be new utilities ran to that. Really, tonight, we just kind of wanted to see if you all had any input, but as soon as this meeting's over, I mean, in the next couple of weeks, Matt and Mr. Richardson and I will be working on a proposal to bring back to you, but we wanted to know if you had any input on it or any other ideas.
I think it's a start. We must do something. The lots are there and they're not being used. We're paying to keep them up, and no doubt it's gotten beyond the fair value of the properties in some cases, and I congratulate city leadership in bringing this forward to us, and I think putting it together and something we can look at a little bit more is an excellent idea. Make a motion that we pass to the next voting session.
I have a question, Manager. What would happen if there's not a structure or a house built on the property within 24 months?
Then we would probably try to, I don't know if we're going to advertise these or how we're going to do this yet, but we would probably try to get another builder to do that or another, somebody else to do it instead of, they wouldn't have any rights. If they don't build anything, it's going to revert back to the city, so. I know, I did read an article a couple of weeks ago, sounded like the City of St. Louis was having a lot of the same problem, and they started selling pieces of property for a dollar, and they had so many months to build a house, and there are several communities doing that because it's not just Poplar Bluff, it's all over the country. I know on the land sale, county collector gets frustrated, some of them have been on the land sale for so many times that nobody will buy them because the liens are so high. And if the liens were forgiven, then I think they would get back on the tax rolls.
Do we have a motion to move that?
I'll second the motion.
A motion has been made and seconded to move item E to the voting session to be held on May 20. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item E, the council will review change order number four on Project Tab 5100011 relative to the pedestrian bridge over Pike Creek.
Yes, as you said, this is the new pedestrian bridge over Pike Creek, part of the Trails project that we've been working on for many years. MoDOT has mandated that we install a Type 4 rock ditch liner, and this change order is to take care of that, and that should wrap up the project and let us finalize everything.
Make a motion, pass it to the voting session, May 20.
Second.
That's tonight.
That's tonight.
What did it say? Oh, it's tonight?
Yes.
Tonight. Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item F, the council will review change order number one on the Shelby Road Phase 2 project.
Yes, the, if you'll remember, back when they were getting towards PP Highway on the Shelby Road project, they ran into, I don't know what you'd call it, a lot of rock. They ended up having to dynamite it out of that rock out of there, ended up taking a lot more time to do, and of course, we had labor and material, and Robertson did make some other adjustments on the road project that saved us money, but the change order is for $492,000. The money does come from the Transportation Development District, the TDD. There is enough money in there to cover that extra cost, and as I let you all, tried to let you all know this afternoon, we're going to open and do a ribbon cutting for Shelby Road this Friday morning at 10 o'clock. I know everybody's really excited about getting that open, so, but if you have any questions on the change order, myself or Smith &amp; Company, and Robertson's here also
Thank you, Mark. I just wanted to provide a little clarification on the schedule as we near completion on Shelby Road. As we got into the final phases of the project, it was our understanding that the roadway would be open to traffic as soon as the temperature would allow us to strip the road. We were real transparent with our intention to open the road as soon as possible, and if necessary, we would go ahead and finish the permanent fencing under traffic as we have had so many times on other DOT projects like this one. It wasn't until we were in the final hours of the striping and planning the opening procedure that we learned that the permanent fence was going to be a prerequisite to opening the roadway. By the time we learned this, we'd already had a subcontract out on the permanent fence, and that subcontractor, he had already allocated resources to the project and with the reasonable expected six to eight week completion time on it. Understanding how anxious the community was to open this roadway and how excited everybody was, and as many as had dropped by our office to let us know they were ready to open it, Robertson Contractors added their own resources to the fence construction to the tune of approximately $28,000 in additional costs to us to expedite this project and get it open. And our forces, along with Joplin Fence, have worked diligently to complete the fence as soon as possible, even through some difficult conditions. We were all out there working on it on Saturday, and I can tell you it was finished in the flood plain with some guys wearing chest waders working in the water. So, the good news, as of Saturday afternoon, it was all complete, and Shelby Road's ready to open.
Good news. Good job.
I drove through there.
Thank you.
I guess after all the rain, and I looked down in one of the fields and thought, wow, it's going to be another two weeks on this fence. And, yeah, even over the weekend, the water was at least that deep by the fence that they were down there working on that, and appreciate it.
Yes.
Do we have a motion to move this to the voting session to be held tonight?
So moved.
Second.
All right. All, excuse me. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item G, the chair would entertain a motion to bring item G off the table for discussion tonight.
I would so move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. The city council will review a recommendation from the Municipal Utilities Advisory Board regarding bids received for wastewater treatment plant upgrade project.
Well, I know everybody's familiar with this project. I mean, there's a lot of people in the audience here also. Just let you all open it up for whatever discussion you want on it. We really do need to get this taken care of, and I appreciate you taking it off the table, and, you know, after discussion, if you could move something to the voting session, vote on it tonight, too, so we can move ahead.
Okay. I think first, we've got Mr. Smith.
Hello again. I'm Robert Smith at 51 North Fifth Street, Poplar Bluff, Missouri. A couple of things first. I thought there was a neat idea about the vacant lots. On my half of the block, there's two houses mine, and one at the end, I own two blanket lots, vacant lots, and there are two more there. So, it would be nice if we could actually move forward on that. I think that's a great idea. And as to the sewage project, I want to compliment the Utilities Committee and Bill Bach for the great job they've done on designing that and putting that forth, and for discussion on the bids. I just saw that it was up for a vote today, and I just wanted to emphasize the importance of taking the lower bid because I had heard a rumor that the next highest bid might increase up to 10% of sewage costs for the people of Poplar Bluff. I don't know if that was a rumor founded in fact or not, but I thought that was important because utilities are one of the biggest expenses that the underprivileged and the people I work with a lot, St. Vincent de Paul and the Boys and Girls Club, I work with, and that's so much important to keep those costs down, and we needed a new sewage product. I just wanted to recommend to the council that to go forward with the lowest bid so we can go ahead as they've approved and that gets a better sewage system in here and waters, which has been a problem for a while. I just want to encourage them to accept the recommendation and move forward with Rock Meller. Thank you very much.
Do we have anyone else?
Well, something we've certainly been working with for a while, and there have been questions, and hopefully, we have moved to the point that we're ready to make a decision. I know that there have been some meetings and information shared in some recent days with council persons, and thankful for those who provided those. And if we're in order...
You're good.
We're in order to go ahead and make a motion to pass it to the voting session tonight. Then I so move.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item H, the city council will review a resolution, amending Resolution Number 1698 and repealing Resolution Number 1809 relative to ignitores on general fund accounts and investments for the City of Poplar Bluff.
Yes, basically, this is a housekeeping item for our bank accounts with the changing signatures on them. You should have received information in your packet on that.
Motion, first reading.
Second.
We've got to move it to voting session.
It needs to change.
Well, I'm just really having trouble tonight. If you all stay with me, I'll be able to get me through. Let's move to the voting session.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
If I may ask that we revisit item F, which we had just workshopped. It was listed on your agenda for voting session for tonight. Actually, it was an error, partly my fault. Actually, it was an error, partly my fault, I think partly the clerk's fault. That should have been a motion to move it to the 520 voting session. I'm sure it's going to be passed or not any controversy about it, but the ordinance has not been prepared, was not prepared for tonight. And so, we need to go back and revisit that and move that to the 520 voting session instead of later tonight.
I think the mayor could do that just for the consensus of council. Are you want a motion?
I think we ought to go back with the original motion and amend the motion to go to 520 instead of later tonight.
I would so move.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, sir. Action required items. Bill Number 8142, the City Council will take action on an ordinance authorizing the destruction of antiquated records for the Municipal Utilities Department.
Move for first reading of Bill Number 8142.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Counselor.
An ordinance authorizing the destruction of antiquated records from the Municipal Utilities Department.
Motion for second reading of Bill 8142.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Counselor.
An ordinance authorizing the destruction of antiquated records from the Municipal Utilities Department.
Motion for adoption of Bill 8142.
Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Second. Do we have a second?
Yes.
Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilman Cornman.
Yes.
Councilman Black.
Yes.
Councilwoman Parsons.
Yes.
Councilman DeGaris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Davis.
Yes.
And Mayor Smith.
Yes. Bill Number 8142 is adopted. Bill Number 8143, the City Council will take action on an ordinance amending the code of ordinances relative to street to street cutting fees for the street department and intermittent fees, and intermittent fees for the cemetery department.
Motion for first reading of Bill 8143.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance amending the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri, Code of City Ordnances, Section 510.560A, relating to fees for street excavations, and Section 150.020 relating to cemetery fees.
Move for second reading of Bill Number 8143.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Counselor.
An ordinance amending the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri, Code of City Ordnances, Section 510.560A, relating to fees for street excavations, and Section 150.020 relating to cemetery fees.
Motion for adoption of Bill 8143.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilman Black.
Yes.
Councilwoman Parsons.
Yes.
Councilman DeGaris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Councilman Cornman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Davis.
Yes.
And Mayor Smith.
Yes. Bill Number 8143 is adopted. Bill Number 8144, the City Council will take action on an ordinance approving a sidewalk waiver for Brookstone Subdivision.
Move for first reading of Bill Number 8144.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Counselor.
An ordinance granting a waiver of the sidewalk requirement under Section 410.080 of the Papa Bluff Code of Ordnances for property located at 1637 Baron Road and known as the Brookstone Subdivision in Papa Bluff.
Motion for second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Counselor.
An ordinance granting a waiver of the sidewalk requirement under Section 410.080, the Papa Bluff Code of Ordnances, for property located at 1637 Baron Road and known as the Brookstone Subdivision in Papa Bluff.
Motion for adoption of Bill 8144.
Any discussion?
I'll give you a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilman DeGaris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Councilman Cornman.
Yes.
Councilman Black.
Yes.
Councilwoman Parsons.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Davis.
Yes.
And Mayor Smith.
Yes. Bill Number 8144 is adopted. Bill Number 8145, the City Council will take action on an ordinance approving a conditional use permit to operate a drive-through window for McAllister's Deli Restaurant located at 2865 Tucker Road.
Motion for first reading of 8145.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Counselor.
An ordinance granting a conditional use permit to David Kirby and McAllister's Deli to permit the use of a drive-through window for the sale of food and non-alcoholic beverages at 2865 Tucker Road in Papa Bluff, Missouri.
Motion for second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Counselor.
An ordinance granting a conditional use permit to David Kirby and McAllister's Deli to permit the use of a drive-through window for the sale of food and non-alcoholic beverages at 2865 Tucker Road in Papa Bluff, Missouri.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Councilman Cornman.
Yes.
Councilman Black.
Yes.
Councilwoman Parsons.
Yes.
Councilman DeGaris.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Davis.
Yes.
And Mayor Smith.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Bill Number 8145 is adopted. Bill Number 8146, the City Council will take action on an ordinance selecting an engineering firm for the downtown infrastructure improvements project.
Motion for first reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Counselor.
An ordinance selecting and appointing an engineering firm for the Papa Bluff Downtown Infrastructure Improvements Project.
Motion for second reading of 8146.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Counselor.
An ordinance selecting and appointing an engineering firm for the Papa Bluff Downtown Infrastructure Improvements Project.
Motion for adoption.
Second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Kirby.
Councilman Cornman.
Yes.
Councilman Black.
Yes.
Councilwoman Parsons.
Yes.
Councilman DeGaris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Davis.
Yes.
And Mayor Smith.
Yes. Bill Number 8146 is adopted. Bill Number 8147, the City Council will take action on an ordinance amending the code of ordinances to include a new section, Section 350.080, parking on unimproved surfaces.
Motion for first reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Counselor.
An ordinance amending the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri, Code of City Ordnances, Section 350, related to method of parking by adding a new section entitled Parking on Unimproved Surfaces.
Motion for second reading, Bill 8147.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Counselor.
An ordinance amending the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri, Code of City Ordnances, Section 350, relating to method of parking by adding a new section entitled Parking on Unimproved Services.
Motion for adoption.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilman Black.
Yes.
Councilwoman Parsons.
Yes.
Councilman DeGaris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Councilman Cornman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Davis.
Yes.
And Mayor Smith.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Bill Number 8147 is adopted. Bill Number 8148, the City Council will take action on an ordinance approving change order number four for the pedestrian bridge over Pike Creek, tab 5101.
Motion for first reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Counselor.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute change order number four relating to the Papa Bluff PP Highway Pedestrian Bridge Project.
Motion for second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Counselor.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute change order number four relating to the Papa Bluff PP Highway Pedestrian Bridge Project.
Motion for adoption of Bill 8148. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilwoman Parsons.
Yes.
Councilman DeGaris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Councilman Cornman.
Yes.
Councilman Black.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Davis.
Yes.
And Mayor Smith.
Yes. Bill Number 8149 is adopted. Or, I'm sorry, 8148 is adopted. Bill Number 8149, the City Council will take action on an ordinance accepting a bid for the wastewater treatment plant upgrade project.
Move for first reading of Bill Number 8149.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Counselor.
An ordinance accepting a bid for the construction of the wastewater treatment plant upgrade project for the city of Papa Bluff.
Motion for second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Counselor.
An ordinance accepting a bid for the construction of the wastewater treatment plant upgrade project for the city of Papa Bluff.
Motion for adoption.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilman DeGaris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton.
No.
Councilman Cornman.
No.
Councilman Black.
Yes.
Councilwoman Parsons.
No.
Mayor Protem Davis.
No.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
It's four three, four no three yes.
Bill Number 8141 is defeated.
Mayor, due to time constraints, I make a motion to award the project to the next lowest base bid Robertson Contractors.
Second.
The question has been presented as to whether or not we can vote on this tonight. You can vote on this tonight if that is the will of the council. However, a proposed ordinance to that effect has not been drafted and has not been presented. If it is passed tonight, then we will go about the process of drafting the ordinance to conform with the motion if it is adopted.
Is it also correct that there are some questions about state, some funding on this if we do not accept the lowest bid?
Well, certainly, those have been discussions ongoing here for a couple of months, and they, this would be the time to revisit those if you wish to in discussion, but the motion has been made and subject to its being seconded and moved to discussion, then it would be an appropriate time tonight to discuss that, yes.
So it's appropriate to discuss it now or later?
I'm not sure where we were in the process. The motion was made by Councilman Davis, and if it was seconded, then it's open for discussion.
Believe it was. Okay. I'm greatly concerned that we're running, what I understand is a risk, and more than a risk, in not receiving funding that is a part of this project by not accepting the low bid. I think it's a complete disservice to utility customers. And I think it would be a major mistake for us to be oblivious to that. It could also knock us out of some low interest money of 1.5% and have to go on the public market to do that. If we do that, then it could be, as estimated by our utility manager and those who work with him in that process, raise the sewer bill for our customers around 10%. I see no reason, no way that we can justify doing that.
Mr. Bach, can you add anything to this?
I agree.
Thank you.
Mr. Bach would concur with my remark.
Sir, please come to the microphone to be recognized and to speak.
Robert Smith, maybe out of order, but it seems like a disservice, again, to take the, when we don't have, we have the lowest bid. We don't take the lowest bid for, I don't know, some good old boy system around here. We're going to take a local contractor and make every citizen in this city pay 10% more just so we can have a local person build. That's irresponsible. And I thought some of the new members were more responsible. And I think that's a disservice, and you should not even put it on voting tonight, but you should let the people know what you're going to do. Make that public, and then let's see where we stand. Thank you.
Thank you.
I make a motion to amend the motion, to delay it till the citizens have opportunity to input it the next voting session.
Second.
All in favor of that motion?
Let's restate the motion. The motion that is pending was to accept the next low bid. The motion to amend was to move it to a workshop session, is that right, Councilman?
To the next May 20 workshop session and allow citizens input on this.
So the motion of Councilman Davis to accept the second low bidder has now been amended to accept the next low bidder and to move it to the May 20th workshop session, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to clarify that so everyone knows what you all are voting on.
And my thinking is it gives citizens, we need to hear from citizens if they want to experience a 10% increase in their sewers. I don't personally.
And I'm not commenting on it, I'm just trying to clarify exactly what is before you for a vote.
Do we have a second to that motion?
I second it.
So, we need a roll call, right? Roll call vote, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilman DeGaris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Councilman Cornman.
No.
Councilman Black.
Yes.
Councilwoman Parsons.
No.
Mayor Protem Davis.
No.
No.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
It's four three.
Four three.
Four yes, and three no, I'm sorry.
Okay, the motion, the amendment carried, so we will bring that back for discussion on May 20. Okay, moving on. Resolution number 1894, the city council will take action on a resolution calling for an election in the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri, on the question, shall the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri redefine the Highway 67 expansion as defined in the ballot measure approved by voters in the election dated April 5, 2005? The current language from Papa Bluff, Missouri to Frederictown, Missouri would be replaced with, from the Arkansas, Missouri state line to Frederictown, Missouri. If approved, no other language, stipulations, parameters, or functionality of the previously approved measure shall change.
Move for first reading of resolution number 1894.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor.
A resolution authorizing submission to the voters of the city of Papa Bluff, a proposal to authorize a one-half of 1% sales tax on all retail sales made in the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri, which are subject to taxation under the provisions of section 144.010 to 144.525, RSMO, for the purpose of redefining the scope of the Highway 67 project previously approved by the voters, for the funding of the additional, addition of two lanes of US Highway 67 from the Arkansas, Missouri state line to Frederictown through a cooperative transportation agreement culminating with a cooperative agreement with the state of Missouri, said sales tax to terminate the payment of all bond, upon the payment of all bonds issued to complete the project.
Motion for adoption, resolution number 1894. Second.
Any discussion?
Certainly, this is an important thing, as we've already acknowledged, to complete the four lane all the way through. Applaud the citizens for allowing this first part, now we're just simply completing the original plan, and something we'll be needing to work on and promote together then.
Sounds good. Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Councilman Cornman.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
Yeah.
Sorry, sorry. It's a man. Councilwoman Parson.
Yes.
Councilman DeGaris.
Yes.
Councilman Black.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Davis.
Yes.
And Mayor Smith.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Resolution number 1894 has been adopted. Resolution number 1840, 1895, the city, the city council will take action on a resolution amending resolution 1698 and repealing resolution number 1809 relative to signatories on general fund accounts and investments for the city of Papa Bluff.
Motion for the reading of resolution number 1895.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor.
A resolution amending resolution number 1657, authorizing certain officers and employees of the city as signatories on the general fund accounts and investments for the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri, and amending resolution number 1809, authorizing certain officers and employees of the city of Papa Bluff Municipal Utilities Department as signatories on the municipal utilities department's bank accounts and investments for the city of Papa Bluff.
Motion for adoption. So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Councilman Cornman.
Yes.
Councilwoman Parson.
Yes.
Councilman DeGaris.
Yes.
Councilman Black.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Davis.
Yes.
And Mayor Smith.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Resolution number 1895 is adopted. KK, the city council of the city of Papa Bluff will meet in a closed meeting in which they will discuss such matters which are exempted under the open meetings law, section 610.21.1, section 610.21.2, section 610.21.3, section 610.21.9, section 610.21.11, section 610.21.12, section 21, 610.21.13, and section 610.21.14 revised statute of Missouri, following the city manager's report.
We will move in closed session following the city manager's report.
Second.
Okay, we need a roll call, don't we? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilman DeGaris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Councilwoman Parson.
Yes.
Councilman Cornman.
Yes.
Councilman Black.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Davis.
Yes.
And Mayor Smith.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Well, as I mentioned earlier, Shelby Road will open this Friday at 10, the ribbon cutting. I know when we did the first Shelby Road opening, we had a, quite an event, we had tents and barbecue and Shelby Mustang cars, and I think this time it'll probably be a little more simple. I think the mayor will probably say a few words and maybe a couple of other individuals, and then we'll do the ribbon cutting, and the signal lights will be turned on, the barricades will be taken down, and people will drive on it legally. I mean, I've, I've driven on it several times, so. We are going to do it at the intersection of PP Highway or Canal Boulevard and Shelby Road. Probably have to park across the street, but there is a crosswalk there, so hope for a big crowd. Exciting week for Papa Bluff tomorrow, there is going to be an announcement of a new manufacturer in town, coming to town. It's the state certified state, state certified industrial site on South 11th Street. Just a big thank you to Steve Halter and Papa Bluff Industries, they've worked very hard on this project, and this can be a great thing for Papa Bluff. A lot of jobs coming to Papa Bluff. And another big step tonight was putting on the ballot for August for four-laning the rest of 67 Highway. The only other thing I have is I've been approached by the county, and we've been working with the Corps of Engineers, Department of Conservation, the Levy Districts on trying to get a study done to clean out Black River. As you know, the flooding's gotten worse and worse over the years, and the county has asked that, if the, if the city would be willing to put up some money, they're going to put up 50,000, and I'm hoping that could come out of the capital improvement sales tax, and I didn't really have time to get it on as a workshop item, but I didn't want to commit anything to the county unless kind of had a consensus from you all before we did that. If we are able to use capital funds, it shouldn't be a problem, we have reserves in capital.
Not a good thing to enter into, save citizens a lot of problems.
It'll take several years to do this, but the river just keeps filling up and filling up, and something has to be done. So, unless somebody says no, well.
I think it's something you need to look into, I truly do.
Okay.
Sounds good to me.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Is there anything else to come before the council tonight?
Motion adjourned.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned.